All right. I would like to call to order the Cumberland School Committee on Thursday, March 23rd, 2023 at 7:01 PM. Next item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to state for the record that Mr. Fiorello and Mrs. Feather are not able to be here tonight. Next item on the agenda is Approval of Agenda. Need a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Collins? Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes five to zero. The next item on the agenda is the Student Government Report. So we have Grace and Lillian.
Hello, everyone. I'm Lily and Souza, Class of 2026.
And I'm Grace Carr, Class of 2023.
And we are here on behalf of Student Government to update you on what has been taking place at Cumberland High School. The past two weeks, our school has been raising money through Pennies for Patients to contribute to the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. As we've been raising money for children with cancer, we have been having fun in the process.
This year, we had in-school dress-up days, America Monday, Tacky Tours Tuesday, Jersey Day Wednesday, Gold Day Thursday, and tomorrow is School Callers' Day. Jersey Day on Wednesday went hand-in-hand with our first annual volleyball tournament. Students teamed up with teachers and played a game of single-elimination volleyball to raise money. This event was a huge success, and everyone involved had a blast. At the end of the night, we totaled $546. Another way of raising money outside of school was a 20% night at Angelo's Pizza Palace. The generosity Angelo's continues to show our school and community is greatly appreciated.
Lastly, for Pennies for Patients, we have in-school donations as well as a donation link. If you wish to donate, regularly tune in to the Clipper Pride CHS Instagram page to find the donation link. In sum, we have raised $3,553 and want to thank all that have contributed.
Aside from Pennies for Patients, we have continued our segments of Teacher of the Week. This month, Mrs. McDonald of the Gym Department and Mr. Disla of World Language have received the WWE Outstanding Teacher Belt. Thank you, Mrs. McDonald and Mr. Disla, for contributing to the positive environment at CHS. With that being said, that concludes the latest update from the CHS Student Government. We are eager to get back to work to better both our school and community in the upcoming weeks. Thank you for your time, and have a nice evening.
All right, next on the agenda is Consent Agenda. Approval of Minutes from the Regular Meeting, 3/9/2023, the Special Meeting, 3/16/2023. Approval of Minutes from the Executive Session, 2/16/2023, and the Executive Session, 3/9/2023. Motion by Mrs. Rogalski? Second by Ms. Vogel. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes five to zero. Next item on the agenda is Personnel Announcements. Dr. Thornton?
Good evening, Madam Chair. First up, we have two appointments. First, 6/20/23 Effective Hire of Tim McGrath, Finance Director. Second, Appointment to a Rehire, 3/13/2023 Nicole Machado, Paraprofessional, CHS. We have two retirements. The first, after 23 years of service, effective 6/30/2023 Laurie Denay, Paraprofessional, Preschool. Second, a retirement after 25 years of service, 6/30/2023 Carolyn LaForte, Paraprofessional at Cumberland Hill. Next, we have several resignations. First resignation currently on personal LOA, effective 6/30/2023 Tamar Chabanyan, STEM, CHS. Second, a resignation currently on personal LOA, it's Nicole Franco, Grade 5 Community, effective 6/30/2023. Next, a resignation currently on personal LOA, effective 6/30/2023 Kristen LaFerrier, a Paraprofessional at CHS. Next, a resignation currently on personal LOA, 6/30/2023 Colby O'Halloran, Math Grade 8 and CMS. Next, a resignation currently on personal LOA, 6/30/2023 Gretchen Petry, Special Educator, Garvin. Two more, a resignation currently on personal LOA, 6/30/2023 Kristy Robinson, Math Essentials, McCourt, one year only. And we have a resignation currently on personal LOA, 6/30/2023 Carol Spalding, Special Educator, Light, CHS. And lastly, Madam Chair, we have coaching appointments as presented.
All right, thank you, Dr. Thornton. Next up on the agenda is Report Outer of Executive Session Meeting on 3/23/2023. Report Outer of Executive Session Votes. We did not take any votes. The next item is a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. I need a motion to seal. Motion by Mr. Rogalski? Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes five to zero. Okay, back to you, Dr. Thornton, Superintendent's Report.
Madam Chair, can you all see the screen? Okay, very good. It's important you see it tonight. So first up, Madam Chair, I wanted you to know it is Arts in Our Schools Month, celebrating art, dance, music, and more. So we have some items to show the committee tonight. First, Cumberland High School, we have McKenna Laverdy, the senior spotlight for the month of March, and here's some of her work here for you to see. And by the way, we will have all these items in your place after in your drives. We now have several shots from artwork at the high school. So without further ado, we'll show you some of the work at the high school this year. We'll just have Mike take us through some of the different pieces. You can see some pretty talented students at the high school. And now, just a special treat, we do have one clip for you from Mr. Farucci, Farucci and the High School Ensemble. So without further ado, Mike, can you play the song for us from Mr. Farucci's ensemble? Thank you, Mike. And I would say, Madam Chair, it's great to see this on the screen, but even better to see them in person. So we do have plans to get some students here in person in the spring to show some more of the arts and music in the springtime. Going on, we have some art from North Cumberland Middle School, just a very display. Next, we have at McCourt, Teagan, Knox Parkers, at Fidelity Investments Art Night, and there's some of her work that she presented. Next, we have at J.J. McLaughlin, we have some art pieces from the early years. Next up, we have some work at Garvin Memorial. Once again, these will all be in your packets. And next up, we have BF Norton, which was entered actually at the State House. So that was exciting to have their work at the State House, and there's some of their work. And next up, that community, we have first Juliana Dextrada with our teacher, Ms. Villanova on the left, Ella Loomis over here in the middle, along with Christopher Rose, and last we have Eber Pont on the far right, all with their work at the State House as well. And some artwork here from Ashton, from Georgia Ethier, second grade. And that's our artwork. Now, last night, something exciting happened. We actually had a Future Chef's Competition. I was having to be one of the judges. A hundred students submitted their recipes for their favorite dish, if you will, and five got to create it last night at the kitchen at the high school. And then we got to judge, you know, what we thought was the most outstanding dish. It was a very close competition, but there's the whole team, and that's right. And probably can't tell. The winner is actually holding the pots and pans. She gets actually several pots and pans to be the winner. That's Avery Trent Sale? Thank you, from Garvin Elementary. So she was the winner, very close contest, but she made the asparagus with some treatment to it, which was quite good. So that was fun. That was last night. Enrollment, you know, I'm always talking about enrollment with you. It's another thought on enrollment. Next slide, Mike. This sheet is something we use all the time to look at enrollment in Cumberland. If you look from top to bottom, you see the five elementary schools. If you look over the top, you see the contractual cap, 23 in Grade 1, Grade 2, 23, 23, 25, 25. You can see here, when we're yellow, means we're over the contractual cap. We can go too over. If you see the word closed, that means we're already at capacity. What I want you to see is, right now, I keep telling you, we're gaining more kids. Right now, one-third of our district elementary is closed today. That's why I tell you, the building projects are important to pay attention to, and if we keep trending up like we are right now, I think within five years, you'll have a place where you're really going to be up against it. Couple things as you look at this. Community school, you can see here, they're in the 22s. We could put more in that building. The problem is the capacity of a building versus the capacity of a classroom. You're at 662 right now. That's too big for an elementary school. You're running six lunches right now. That's like from breakfast to like almost when you leave school. The goal is, once the new wing comes online at Ashton, you take around 100 off this number, and you can put that to Ashton, the third wing, if you will, and make that a more reasonable size. But my point is, certain parts of the town, you can see, especially in the early grades, are getting very tight. So it's really good to have, keep that competition going around building projects, the whole BF conversation, right? Because it's, we're trending up. Right now, we're around 5,006. We're hovering over 5,000 right now. But we're climbing pretty quickly. Also, not on the sheet, we know, as Rachel spoke before, preschool this time last year might have, say, five or six students who we needed to support. Now it might be near 30. So we keep gaining. Yes, Madam Chair?
So that's Grade K1 and 2 that are closed.
Yes.
So we have BF Norton, and we have Community, but for all the reasons we've been, you've stated about the overall capacity of Community. And don't we, I mean, it's only March. Don't we generally get more, an influx of students over the summer?
Yeah, we do. And a few things happen here. First, some students may be at Cumberland Hill, where maybe their home school is really, say, Community, but they ask for a waiver in the summer. We get all the waivers and put them in order and rank them, and approve all the ones we can in the summertime. But even putting these kids back to where their home school is this summer will be pretty close to the same dynamic. You're right that we keep getting kids as we go further along in the year. My point is this, all indications show we're gaining kids, not losing kids. It'd be a shame to finish all of our building projects in five years and then need portable trailers. So that's my point of, you really got to look at the long game of enrollment. This is like a harbinger, the K5. We have room in the middles. The high school, I found at the high watermark of the high school, it was 1973, I told you, they had 1,800 students at the high school. I think back then, though, they didn't have the same regulations. It was pre-IDEA, a long time ago. So rules could have been different back then for how we had kids in school. But we have room at the high school.
Mr. Collins?
Dr. Thornton, it's more of a comment based on the enrollment discussions we've had in light of the NIASC study. One thing that I caught last week when you had informed me that we were at 5,006, and I presented this before the Town Council, I know Council President Kinch is here. Our numbers of 5,006 right now are, they exceed the NIASC projection of 28, 29. So we're well surpassed what NIASC had projected for us. So we're years ahead of that. So that's something to also consider, and the trend, as you said, is moving upward. It's not moving in the other direction.
Right. Having studied, going back to 73, it kind of went in waves. High watermark was 7,367 kids in 73. You know, I was told back then they had double sessions even. Then it went down a little bit in the 80s, then the 90s, back up, then down. Our last high watermark was 2,008 with 5,067 kids. So we're approaching the 2,008 high watermark right now. That's our next benchmark. I just want you to see that. We're constantly looking at this.
Mrs. Rogalski? So looking at these numbers, there is a bill that's been sent to committee for both the State House and Senate that would limit the class size for kindergarten through Grade 2 to 20 students per classroom, and that would have, not devastating, but it would have very severe impacts looking at our numbers, correct?
That's certainly a lofty, admirable idea, but I don't believe it's grounded in reality. Looking at our numbers, we'd be adding three classrooms right now in the district. First, where's the space? Second, where's the budget for that? Unbudgeted and no space. So admirable, not realistic.
I do have a question. It's more of a theoretical. So we obviously have accounted for this in our renovations. We have a plan to accommodate this. If we hit that high, if we exceed that high watermark of 7,300 from the 70s, and all our renovations are done, what could we do as a district in the event where we have all these renovations and now we've just exceeded our expectations because people are recognizing, again, that Cumberland's a place they want to move to?
I think the first things that would happen was, it'd be small moves. If we keep the current configuration, the current BF size, the current system, right? We have, as we get more students moving in, we'd do some boundary shifts to accommodate. So you'd have to take, if we put a new wing on to Ashton, as you know, that's in place, right? We could take a swatch of like Garvin, if you will, and push it over to Ashton, push BF up. We'd be playing with boundaries to buy us time. And then, if you wanted to make Community smaller, because it's a good thing to be smaller, 650 is too big, you'd be loading up Community again, making it too big, kind of defeating the whole purpose, because 650 is too big for a school K5.
I don't want to put you on the spot here, but...
You can.
Okay, I'll try. Do we know, once all the renovations are done, do you know what the maximum student capacity will be once all our renovations are done in a few years?
Instructional capacity? I don't have it on my head, but I can get it to you tomorrow morning. But we have a capacity. Each student by right has somebody's square feet per child. It's a regulation. And we have the instructional capacity for each location. So I can get it to you right now, as it currently exists with BF as being a BF3 track right now, right? You want the capacity of the elementary. I can have that for you first thing. But to me, I look at this, like I said, I'm looking at the numbers and just as we're trickling up, you know, what we're seeing here. So it's, you know, one-third is closed today. So I just want you to have that. All right, Mike, moving on. Last meeting, Ms. Smith, you wanted me to look at Garvin's traffic patterns. I wanted to bring it back to you to show you what we have. So, Mike, if you can go to the next slide, we have an aerial shot of what we're talking about at Garvin. So it's a little small. Mike will blow it up for you now. Little more, if you can. Okay, how's that? So essentially, here's the street in question that we're always concerned about, right? And the cars stacking up. In this plan going forward, a couple things would happen. First, we can get cars in, double-stacked all the way through this parking lot. And then currently, we drop off six at a time, two, two, and two. We can go up to four, eight at a time, I believe. I'm sorry, it's currently four. It'll go to six at a time. So we can increase that capacity and take some stress off. The mini buses also now will go... Okay, Mike, where are we? Thank you. This is new. It's a new front driveway. That takes away the mini buses out of the traffic pattern to the front of the school. So that should take some of the pressure off. And lastly, if you go down, I can't do that, the regular buses will go out the side, if you will, right like this. So I'm not going to tell you this will eliminate the traffic. The problem is, since the pandemic, many more people drive their kids to school. It's not just Cumberland. So we can't get rid of it. We can minimize it somewhat, but not get rid of it. So that's currently the plan, to get more cars off by double-stacking, dropping off six at a time, and then the front relief with the minis. So it should reduce it, but it won't eliminate it.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton, for providing us with the update. Just one question. That parking lot that we're going to bring them through is a teaching parking lot? It's for teachers? Or is that visitors as well? Is that off of North Garden, the first place that they're going to come through?
It would be freed up in the morning or have a space where we can get through it. Be cone-off accordingly. We'd have a cone, so we'd have a space to get the double stack in.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking is, I just know it from other schools and seeing what happens when they have to go through, if teachers are going to be pulling in or there's parking that's going to happen, or parents pull along the side because they want to park in that spot and just walk the child instead of waiting in the queue. Are we going to restrict some of that, or how are we going to manage that? Because, again, that could, again, then lead to another problem on North Garden, which is what we're trying to minimize.
Most of the schools, Garvin included, have some staff that volunteer to do a duty in the morning. They get paid for it, and they kind of have different positions. The best example of that is BF Norton, where they have a well-run machine getting the cars off the street. I think they have seven folks doing that. So we'd have more people positioned to queue them up, make sure no one's doing that behavior, keeping everyone kind of following the rules, queuing up, getting in, getting out.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And now I think I have one more topic for you. It's construction. So these are the Monday pictures as I went around. So first, this is the new Garvin exit or front driveway, as I mentioned to you. You see, they come in, they go, well, it's really for minis and for deliveries. That's already kind of just roughed out. This is the Garvin steel. Today, we had the decking go up top. The roof went on, and the trusses come, I think, on Tuesday. So that's moving along outside. They pour the cement in April. A lot of work here, not exciting, but it's important to see. This is HVAC, right? That's going in. That's a good thing for schools. It's not fully HVAC, but Garvin has quite a few areas that are HVAC, so it's nice to see. That's all of that. Once again, HVAC, and, once again, HVAC, and then this is the ductwork, that kind of where it goes to, to the different locations. Next slide, please. That's just the ductwork showing with HVAC. So it's good to see it's going in. Once again, not exciting, but exciting to me. This is electrical work going in on the outside of the front of the building, so progress being made on the electrical that's going in. Next slide, please. This was a staircase in Garvin. That's now where the new building connects to the old building. They knocked the stairs out, blew the wall out, and that's where you'll actually come in now. So that's exciting to see that happening. The flagpole, attention to detail. We can't have a nice new Garvin have that flagpole. That's not going to cut it. So we're getting rid of that flagpole. You'll have a new flagpole there that's not rusted. It'll be non-metal, so it's not going to rust ever. Also have a light on it. Flags have the lights on them. Flag can stay up, so the flag will have a light on it, so we can have that.
Dr. Thornton, we have a question.
I just have a quick question about Garvin. As of last week, when I actually reported to the Town Council, Garvin was slightly ahead of schedule because of some supply chain issues. And when I saw the steel going up, can you give us an update?
Garvin's a little behind.
A little? I beg your pardon. Garvin was slightly behind schedule.
Yep. Garvin was behind on the addition on schedule on the inside. The cement pour is slated, we had a meeting today at 1 o'clock, we met, and they're going to pour that early April. They're going to get the steel trusses in. They're giving us a new schedule for the outside next Thursday. So it'll be a question of, like, now with the current timeframe, what can we do to get back on schedule? We'll look at options next week. But the outside was behind, inside is on schedule.
All right, thank you.
This is Ashton, very exciting. Always easy with new construction, right? New construction, Ashton, windows in, brickwork is in, looks fantastic. One thing, an unintended thing to think about when you build these schools, Ashton is built next to a major road, 295, right? I don't think today we'd probably have a school like Ashton built that close to 295. Will need to put in some permanent fencing here, or this temporary fencing is, because you're very close and you really can't have students there without a proper fence there. So you'll see some fencing going in. It'll be a change order, but we can't not look at that. That'll be in Phase 2 of Ashton. I just wanted you to see that. Next slide, please. Front door of Ashton, once again, windows in, roof is on, so it's moving right along. Next slide, please. Another look at Ashton, just kind of the side view with the front. Next slide. This is a skylight from the inside. Skylights are in, they're all sheet-rocked. They're really big skylights, nice to see here, all done. The windows from the inside of Ashton. Next slide, please. This is the Ashton Comedy Room, kind of like a Cumberland Hill, you have that kind of that arch, right? Now you can see what it looks like when you're starting it. There it is. And this is Community School now. Their masons are putting in the brickwork here on this side of the addition. Next slide, please. This is a stage. This will be a stage at Community. You can see it's already going in, and that's what it looks like. This is the window they cut out. They call it bowered lights, where they cut a hole and lights go into the next room, bowered lighting. So that's the bowered light there. All the plumbing and copper is in, so that's exciting. We're moving right along on that. And this is, all the windows are in, are going in now at the new addition at Community. That's moving. And once again, more brickwork on the far side, so really coming along. That's it, I think. Happy to answer any questions on construction.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Next up on the agenda is Reports of Standing Committees. Item A, Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update. Mr. Collins?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, fellow members. The Fiscal Management Subcommittee met this evening, and we just got a monthly office report from Mr. Pignano as we are continuing on with budget season. And I'm trying to think, Sid Exo Food Services, they still are operating with a surplus. And other than that, we have four resolutions for the committee's review later on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next up is the Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update. Ms. Smith?
There was no meeting, so there will be an update. Probably at the next meeting, we'll have one beforehand.
All right, thank you. Next, Achievement and Communications Subcommittee Update. Back to you.
I will take this one. The Achievement and Communications Subcommittee met Monday evening, and Mr. Adolfo, Mr. Costa, Mr. Adolfo Costa from CHS, met, as did Melissa Cusennets from the high school, to discuss a review of the current schedule. They're looking to, they are considering changing the schedule to provide a variety of options. of options, so they're in the planning phases right now, so we can expect some more details, essentially moving from the rotating schedule they have now to more of a block-type scheduling. And they've considered, Mr. Costa has done exhaustive work on this, meeting with other principals, people who are using this. It would provide more flexibility, what we think, it'll provide more flexibility for the high school, and really provide more opportunities for things like internships later in the day, and extending instructional hours for advanced placement classes. So it's still in the planning phases, more details will be following, but one thing that came out of the committee was we want to make sure, the achievement subcommittee asked Mr. Costa, and he obviously agreed, to include all stakeholders in the process, not just parents, teachers, but also collective bargaining. Anytime there's a change, change can be difficult, this isn't a drastic change, but I think people are going to like this once they understand it, and I think it's very important to, just as long as people understand it, and I just don't want to shove things down people's, you know, without telling them. So it was very productive, and I think we all will look forward to hearing more, so he'll be up here eventually, once everything's ironed out, so, thank you. It's not, and it's not happening this year or next year, so we're looking, he's looking, the school department's looking twenty-three, twenty-four. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Collins. Next, district health-
Sorry, twenty-three, yeah, twenty-four, twenty-five, yeah.
Next, district health and wellness subcommittee update, Mrs. Rogalski?
Sadly, I have no updates for you this week, we did not meet. Our next meeting is April twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Mrs. Rogalski. Next up, comments from the public. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Okay, thank you. We do want to acknowledge President Kinsch, thank you for attending tonight. Next up is new business, item A, discussion and/or vote on fiscal year, fiscal year 2024 superintendent's recommended school budget. Dr. Thornton?
Madam Chair, good evening. In your packets, the last page of the supplement, you have our homework due to you from the last week's budget meeting, where we incorporated in the changes in personnel you wanted, and we balanced the budgets. Once again, to take you through it, we looked at adding the two MLL jobs, point-five community, point-five Garvin, point-five NCMS, point-five high school. We looked at adding the one MLL TA, the high school. We added the liaison, the person reaching out, the point-five, and we added the point-four school site to give you a full school psych, primarily for the preschool uptick. So in all, to balance, we had some spring activity in HR, some folks who were leaving, retiring, resigning, so that's breakage. So we took that and made some just assumptions, which we do when we get breakage. So for example, the special ed person exiting was a step ten, we think, as always with special ed, we think around step five, maybe a three, Rachel tells me, we're thinking five, so that's breakage. So we did that with these positions and came close. The last bit, we think we had a little room in the pensions. As you know, pension, we pay a percentage to the state for the pensions, and we think we had a little room in that line, so we took that, and that gives you a balanced budget. So happy to answer any questions. Mr. Pignano's here to answer any more detailed questions, but that's how we balanced, given what you talked about last week.
So, I'm sorry, I was asking the question, I should have left my microphone on. So we had, at our meeting last Thursday, I had made a motion to add these positions, and that motion did not pass. So do we procedurally now have to add this, or have you just added?
This is not added yet, so this is your budget, once you vote on it tonight, you would add these if you want to.
If we approve, this is included in what you're submitting to us tonight.
Yeah, currently, it's the superintendent's budget, soon to be your budget.
Yep.
And you would approve it as presented tonight?
Yeah, which includes-
So, but we had asked him, even though the motion did not pass last Thursday, we had asked, I had asked him to come up with a plan, and I told him I was going to be advocating for these positions this evening, and then the reason it failed was because I believe, I don't want to speak for Ms. Freeman or Mr. Fiorella, but they wanted the full committee here, which is entirely reasonable. The only thing I would ask, though, however, since I've been advocating for this for a while, you have the clerk reach-out. I would ask that that's called the community facilitator, so people have, because when you look at clerk reach-out, it's like, what is that? You know, a community facilitator, they will be facilitating, the idea of this position, this came out of a achievement subcommittee meeting in which the MLL teachers were talking about some of the challenges they are facing, and one of the challenges is they're being pulled in many directions. There's an MLL shortage, and obviously, we're advocating in this budget for two extra MLL positions, we have an exploding MLL population, we need to service them, this population, because as we've seen in Rycast presentations, you know, it's not just the Rycast data, you know, and our math scores, but we have to also account for the MLL population, which is exploding right now in Cumberland. So the community facilitator position would help free up the teachers to do their job and facilitate. Furthermore, you know, Dr. Santa has also mentioned that she's in dire need of help, she's being pulled in a thousand directions, which is, we all know, and her staff are, so whatever ability this person has, depending on what the needs, so it's not going to just be exclusive to MLL, it's going to be, you know, out of, I think it would fall under Mr. Damana's office, or Dr. Martin, they can figure it out, but as long as we budget for this, this is a, this is not big money, clearly. It's a point-five position, and the key will be not just budgeting for it, but finding the right person, who knows the community, who's preferably both bi or multilingual, somebody who can really help us continue to move this district forward, so.
Dr. Thornton?
Madam Chair, while it's in my mind, I know you mentioned MLL. Currently, MLL is a categorical piece of funding for the formula for Rhode Island. There is talk at the State House of making it a multiplier, like MLL would be worth one point something times the students, so districts that are gaining MLLs, that's great news for us to hear. If it happens, you may see more state aid with our MLL population going up.
A couple of things I wanted to add. One of the reasons, when Mr. Collins made the motion at the last meeting, that Mr. Fiorello and I voted against it, was because we wanted to see exactly this tonight, we wanted to see what's the offset if we choose to add these positions, so we didn't want to pass it if we didn't know how we were going to balance the budget with it. Because from the budget workshop that we had, I mean, it's clear, like Mr. Collins says, that our MLL population is exploding, it's trending downwards in the state, but it's trending upwards in Cumberland. It's grown over forty percent in the last three years, and it's trending up at every single school. And one in twenty, one in every twenty students is a MLL student. So these needs are growing, and we need to be able to support them. So I'm really pleased that you were able to find a way to add these without a negative impact and another part that would hurt other students by adding this. So, other comments?
With that, I would, if there are no other comments, I'll make a motion to amend Dr. Thornton's superintendent's budget.
No, you don't need to amend it. This is, this is the budget.
This is the-
That was the question I had asked before.
I think right now, it's my budget, soon to be your budget, so you can amend it now if you want to change it, or prove it as is.
This is, it, the budget-
No, I understand that, because, all right, fair enough, no-
Yes.
So there was no point in voting last Friday, and it was Thursday anyway? Because he was just going to add it anyway?
Well, because that's what we asked him to do. We asked him to bring it tonight, add it in, so we could see the offset, and we could either vote as it is, with this included, or we could change it. So now, are you making a motion?
No, I just, I don't think I have to make a motion to amend this, and one of the parts I was going, one of the amendments, it just, I don't think this is like, something that has to be amended. I think you can just change that clerk reach-out to community facilitator, I don't think that required, that's what my other part of that was.
I need that note.
So I will make a motion to approve this budget, including these positions.
Okay, we do have a motion, so we will have to second that, and then we can have it for discussion. So a motion by Mr. Collins, second for discussion by Ms. Vogel, so second for discussion, and now you could ask your question.
So I agree with the budget as it is, I do have a question regarding legislation at the State House. A piece of legislation put in is requiring, not yet, but public schools to employ at least one full-time social worker for every two-hundred-and-fifty students. General Assembly will appropriate two million dollars in the fiscal year of 2024, and I believe that we need tons of social workers in our school system, I support it a hundred percent. However, I'm not sure what the feasibility is and how that impacts our budget, so I'm kind of-
I mean, right now, if memory serves, Dr. Santa, we have three, and by this bill, we'd need seventeen more. You said the state gave two million dollars for this endeavor? Just Cumberland, if they were step tens with fringe, that'd be one-point-seven million, just for Cumberland. So I'm not sure, once again, well-intended, I'm not sure that's realistic.
Thank you for your input.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the, approve the fiscal year 2024 superintendent's recommended school budget. We have a motion by Mr. Collins, we have a second by Ms. Vogel, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? It passes five to zero. Thank you, Dr. Thornton, so next steps is this gets-
Yes, Mr. Pignano, what's our date to get this budget to the town? So prior to April third, it goes to the town? Okay, thank you.
All right, great, thank you, and thank you to Dr. Thornton and Mr. Pignano, and to everyone for all of your work in putting a good budget forward this year, as usual. Next item is discussion and/or vote to approve certified teacher non-renewal based on fiscal reasons only. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Mrs. Rogalski?
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? That passes five to zero. The next item on the agenda, item C, discussion and/or vote to approve homeschool instruction request for the 2022-2023 school year. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Ms. Smith. Second by Mrs. Rogalski. All in favor? Aye, opposed? That passes five to zero. Next item on the agenda is discussion and/or vote to approve resolutions, Mr. Collins?
Yes, resolution time, there are four resolutions, SCPR dash zero-three dash twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-five through dash twenty-eight. These all passed fiscal management subcommittee three to zero, but I do have, I'm going to ask for an amendment that, which was consistent, which is consistent with an amendment that was passed in fiscal management subcommittee. On twenty-three, I would, I beg your pardon, on twenty, twenty-two-three dash twenty-five, it would be number one on the, on the agenda, I would ask for a motion to change the word "eventually" when it comes to funding, to specify, quote, "community bond fiscal year 2024." The amendment did pass fiscal management subcommittee three to zero, and I'd move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins is making a motion to approve amended, to amend wording in SCPR zero-three twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-five. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Vogel. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? That passes five to zero, so now we have that, that resolution is amended.
What I'm going to do now is I'm going to ask now for just this SCPR dash zero, dash zero-three dash twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-five to be approved, I would ask, I would ask that this be approved by the committee as amended, and then I'll move on to the other three.
Okay, so Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR zero-three twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-five as amended, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Smith, all in favor? Aye, opposed? That passes five to zero.
And then we have, again, SCPR dash zero-three twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-six through twenty-two-three dash twenty-eight. These final three resolutions did pass fiscal management subcommittee three to zero, and I'd move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR zero-three twenty-twenty-three twenty-six through twenty-eight, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Vogel, all in favor? Aye, opposed? That passes five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Collins, and, hold on, next, discussion and/or vote to approve payment of bills.
I got good news for you, there were no payment of the bills this evening. You're in luck. Next time.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is school committee comments, school liaison reports, any comments from the school committee?
I do have one, my mic is already on, I hate to waste it. There obviously, an email was sent out, and, an email was sent out tonight, there was a bus incident dealing on Diamond Hill Road today with a school bus, and parents, anyway, long story short, a reckless driver grossly violated the law and thought that their, you know, destination was significantly more important than the safety of students, and nearly caused injury to students. Fortunately, nobody was hurt. But luckily, there was a state trooper, a couple cars behind, who immediately went into action and arrested the individual, reportedly. So again, this is the second time I've been here where police were at the right place at the right time, but if anybody's watching, the flashing lights in that stop sign means stop. I cannot think of anything more arrogant and ignorant than try to blow past a bus. So the parents are beginning to email us, they obviously are concerned that this could have, somebody could have been hurt. Dr. Thornton has, he is going to talk to Chief Benson tomorrow and see what we can do to address this. It is kind of hard to create policy around people who do illegal activity, it's hard to anticipate when people are going to do things, but this could have been a lot worse, and it is very important that, you know, the police were in the right place at the right time, and this person was taken into custody. So thank you to the Rhode Island State Police and the parents and the bus driver, who was, who moved quickly into action to keep the bus out of the way, so, yeah, so, thank you, and thank you for that, nothing serious happened.
Any other comments from the school committee? All right, the next item on the agenda is vote to go into executive session for discussion of items referred to in Rhode Island general law forty-two, forty-six, five. Do we have exec tonight, Dr. Thornton?
All set, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is a German, I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mrs. Rogalski?
Second.